Lord, Almighty God, we are here today. We need your presence and Lord, thank you sa protection and good health nga nakabot ka medalinga place, safe and sound. And thank you for the knowledge and wisdom that you will partake to us to tackle our business for today. Please protect your sons and daughters in this LGO. And Lord, we pray for the good health of each and everyone. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I am dated by law, so enough measures in our denances that would down the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuits for happiness, peace, prosperity. I believe in public service of itself as a guiding principle of my official law and as a credit to the pathways of local legislations. May all the uman in my guided mind that I shall be true to my duties.
Okay, so Madam Secretary, let's have a roll call.
Honorable Arnold H. Armada, Honorable Carlo F. Apiado, Honorable Archin K. Palasiggy, Honorable Moises L. Dular, Honorable Ryan M. Dumaran, Honorable Dargan H. Lama, Honorable Maria Gennelin N. Meiya, Honorable Marie Blight A. Cartuano Garingo, Honorable Marvin L. Dalanon, Honorable Jopert D. Durana, and Honorable Weldon L. Puskablo.
Okay, so corum is declared. Let's proceed to the next order of business.
Next is the approval of the minutes of the previous session, Mr. Chair. We have the minutes of March 17, 2025.
Okay, so we'll consider the minutes dated March, ah, 17, 2025. So far, any correction?
Seventeen.
Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Apiado.
Mr. Chair, if there's no correction on our minutes dated March 17, 2025, I move for its adoption.
Okay, so the minutes of our regular session held on March 17, 2025 is hereby adopted. So next.
Next is the privilege hour, Mr. Chair.
So any member would like to render a privilege speech?
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Moises Dularis, recognized. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone. So, Mr. Chair, we have an approved ordinance last year giving incentives to all BIPATs or barangay tanods in the whole, in the municipality of Isulan. And during our budget, naghatag mangitas ang approved nato siya for this 2025 that we will give an allowance from LGO to all barangay tanods at an amount of 500 pesos. So since last Monday, Mr. Chair, the budget was already approved. So my question is, kailan natin ibigay 'yung pa-implement 'yung ano natin, Mr. Chair, 'yung pagbigay ng allowance sa ating mga tanod? So just a reminder from our executive, local chief executive, and of course, siguro mani-main nato ng ato na MPO siya focal person in a person of Mr. Eric Fantiliano to allocate some budgets, Fantilanan for budget for this barangay tanod allowance, allowances, Mr. Chair.
So, so far, wala passing allowance nga na-release.
Wala pa kayang atong budget, wala pa man na.
Ah, bagu lang.
Bagu lang na.
Bagu lang na approve, okay. So, ano to, 500?
500 a month.
Per month, okay. So ang do na include dera, atong 20?
20, according to Republic Act 7160.
Oo, gamo tong ato na ano. Kagag ang aton budget nakasulud sa, ang budget na para sa BIPAT, nakasulud sa MPOC.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. So ang request mo, Honorable Dularis.
Is siguro eh, we can have the attention of Mr. Eric Fantiliano.
Okay, Mr. Eric Fantiliano, oo, atong atong focal person.
Focal person sa MPOC.
MPOC.
To also to prepare sa CCI na to.
So, we will request his presence.
Next is yun.
Ah, next session.
Yes, sir.
So we will be requesting our secretariat to prepare a letter, no?
Yes, sir.
Ah, ang protocol ta is address to the mayor then to Mr. Fantilanan or requesting the presence of Mr. Fantilanan on the next session. Okay, thank you, Honorable Dularis. So, any other matter?
Another matter, Mr. Chair.
Ah, yes.
So last year also may mga ordinance sa kita nga gusto i-himoon atong ordinance ang taasan ta ang sweldo o ang allowance sa ato ng mga daycare worker. So kaduha ko na to ginna privilege. Kaggin kwanto ni Honorable Palasiggy nga na-privilege na nakulong siya na ang magpadayon. So I'm waiting for how many long time kagwa wala man na himuan. So this time, Mr. Chair, siguro as a member of Committee Chairman on Education together with Honorable Carlo Apiado, we will sponsor the said ordinance institutionalizing the daycare worker of municipality of Isulan giving allowances and other purposes thereof.
Okay, sige. So meaning same rate nga po ng ato ng daycare worker for this year, last year, and for this year?
Wala na himuan, Mr. Chair, sang additional allowances sa ato ng mga daycare worker. So actually, ang mga daycare worker ta nga sa mga barangays lain-lain ng ila sina mayara sila honorarium na receive sa barangay nila. Pag-abot naman sa municipyo, nagabi sila sa lint of service, Mr. Chair. Halimbawa, do five years na siya, nagabaton sila sa 35, depende sa lint of service nila. So kun na maginstitutionalize kita, Mr. Chair, siguro flow rate na lang o additional 2,000 pesos ang ato ni add sa ila. Kun na naghahastan sila subong sa 3,005 plus 2,001,500 plus 2,000 ang ato nga idugang kay according sa tong mga seminars na to na tinan nga dapat gani a minimum o ba 3,000 pesos ang ato nga makuha nila din sa ato ng municipyo as counterpart sa daycare worker na to.
3,000?
3,000 ang pagkapan.
So ang atong hinatag sa daycare ta is 3,000 per month?
Wala pa reas, Mr. Chair.
Ah, wait, gano'n pareas?
Kun na halimbawa mga two years, three years, pala may 1,5, may 2,000 para ang lint of service, abi ang nakabasis subong.
Big ko tagin base.
Oo.
Pero wala ta ordinance along that line. Ngamuna ato nga basihan sa pagtatag sa ila allowance, no? Ah, so amuna institutionalizing para mag-set kita sang.
Standard.
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 Qualification para maging basis na to sa ato mga daycare workers, okay? Ah, honorarium, ang term ta, no? Honorable Apiado?
Yes, Mr. Chair, in support to the privileged speech of Honorable Moises Dular, this representation is also in one in strengthening our early childhood care development program. Kaya ang problema hindi malanggib ang honorarium lang sa atong daycare workers but the entire, ano, we have to strengthen the entire program as a whole, the entire early childhood care development program among the daycare program na to, Mr. Chair. With this, together with Honorable Dular and this representation, we are proposing on first reading in today's session a resolution in acting an ordinance institutionalizing the early childhood care development program in the municipality of Isulan, providing additional funds therefore and for other purposes, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, no? Ah, at least mag, though may uniformity, though may solusay magkaroon standard ang mga itodlo sa aton daycare worker sa ila kabataan, no? Though may, ay, anong term ta? Though may curriculum, though may module, though may ano, no? That will be uniformly applied sa tanan nga center. Base may araw man, pero at present, no? Pero base kung, ah, well, we'll see. Okay, so if there's no objection, the said item is included in the first reading this session. So any other matter on privilege from the other members? If there's none, then let's proceed, Madam Secretary.
First is the resolution number 18-2025 of barangay Dilutiliya requesting the Honorable Mayor Mariethes K. Palasiggy to allow the conduct of kakfighting and pawakan activities for charity purposes and celebration of the balikbayan program for overseas Filipino workers on April 2, 9, and 16, 2025.
Okay, so refer this to the Committee on Games.
Next is the resolution number 2025-026 of barangay Bambad requesting for the approval to hold kakfights on April 12, 19, and 26, 2025 in connection with the Puruk Foundation anniversary of Puruk bagong silang Bambad Isulan Sultan Kudarat.
Ah, refer to the Committee on Games.
So next is letter received from Sokelco o ay si General Manager, Mr. Alfredo Evangelista PhD addressed to Honorable Arnold H. Armada Municipal Vice Mayor regarding the 46th Annual General Membership Assembly for AGMA and 6th State of the Electric Cooperative Address on April 26, 2025 at 8:30 to 2:00 PM at the Sultan Kudarat Sports Complex and Cultural Center.
Okay, so for information.
Number four, letter received from DiRalbo regarding the trade day training on the new government procurement act or RA 12009 and its implementing rules and regulations on April 9 to 11, 2025 at the Greenleaf Hotel General Santo City.
Okay, so for information.
Next is the letter received from the office of the mayor addressed to Honorable Arnold H. Armada regarding the copy operation order for the concreting of Placideco Road to Bin Camino Avenue at barangay Kalawaguan, Isulan Sultan Kudarat.
Okay, so refer this to the Committee on zoning and infrastructure.
So next is the presence of Mr. Andrewell K. Palasiggy.
Okay, so I don't see the presence of Mr. Andrewell, so of the moment, we'll proceed.
So next is the proposal of Honorable Dular and ordinance institutionalizing the daycare workers of the municipality of Isulan.
Okay, so. Ah, okay, refer this to the Committee on Education.
So next is the proposal of Honorable Apiado, this same lang.
Same, same.
Same lang.
So we have no more items on first reading, Mr. Chair.
So, let's proceed to the next order of business.
So we are now on the committee reports. And first to report is the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriation and Ways and Means.
So the Chairman, Honorable Carlo Apiado is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The subject of the report is the committee report of the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means. Committee Report Number 2025-10 pursuant to the referred annual budgets to this committee, the same were forwarded to the Office of the Municipal Budget Officer for preliminary review. In response on February 25, 2025, and March 21, 2025, this office received copies of the preliminary review of this annual budget from the Office of the Municipal Budget Officer addressed to the honorable members of the Sangguniyang through this representation, chairperson of the committee. Items, number one, annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of barangay Mapantig in the amount of 4,841,445 pesos. Item number two, annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of barangay Tayugo in the amount of 4 million. Check lang. Same sila, ano? I would like to check the amount, Mr. Chair, because Tayugo and Mapantig has the same exact amount of budget.
Sa review, sir, ang mga. Sa review sang budget.
And number three, the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Sangguniyang Kabataan o barangay Dansuli in the amount of 940,729 pesos and 30 centavos. Findings, as per preliminary review, the aforementioned annual budgets revealed substantial compliance with the pertinent provisions of RA 7160 otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991 and its implementing rules and regulations subject to the following conditions as follows. Item number one, as regard annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of barangay Mapantig in the amount of 4,841,445 pesos. Number one, the capital outlays such as office equipment, IT equipment, and softwares and furnitures and fixtures with cost below 50,000 pesos shall be recorded as semi-expandable property pursuant to commission and audit circular number 2022-04 dated May 31, 2022. Number two, discretionary fund with account code 5-02-10-030 should be used for public purposes and other miscellaneous expenses related to the official duties of the punong barangay. And number three, the provisions of RA 9184 and its implementing rules and regulations in the procurement of the materials for infrastructure projects or civil works, goods, and consulting services as well as commonly used supplies and materials pursuant to administrative order number 17 shall strictly be adhered to. As regard item number two, annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of barangay Tayugo. Number one, the barangay development council shall see to it that the programs, projects, and activities included in the barangay budget are consistent with the approved AIP as per section 389B7 of RA 7160. Number two, the provisions of RA 9184 and its implementing rules and regulations in the procurement of materials for infrastructure projects or civil works, goods, and consulting services as well as commonly used supplies and materials pursuant to administrative order number 17 shall strictly be adhered to. Item number three, as regard the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguniyang Kabataan o barangay Dansuli. Number one, the Sangguniyang Kabataan shall see to it that the programs, projects, and activities included in the annual budget are consistent with the approved annual barangay youth investment program or ABYIP. Number two, the monthly honorarium of Sangguniyang Kabataan members including the escape treasurer and secretary shall be in accordance with local budget circular number 148 dated December 23, 2022. And number three, capital outlays such as office equipment, IT equipment, and softwares and furnitures and fixtures with cost below 50,000 pesos shall be recorded as semi-expandable property pursuant to commission and audit circular number 2022-04 dated May 31, 2022. Accordingly, it was recommended that the respective appropriation ordinance of the annual budgets of the fore-said barangays and Sangguniyang Kabataan be declared operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025 as reviewed by the committee pursuant to section 333 of Republic Act 7160 as amended otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991. Further, it is understood that this review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provisions of law. Finally, in the implementation of these annual budgets, compliance with all existing accounting, auditing, and other administrative rules and regulations shall properly be observed and the same shall be the responsibility of the concerned implementing barangay unit and Sangguniyang Kabataan officials. We recommend, Mr. Chair, wherefore premises considered, this committee hereby recommends passing the following resolutions. Number one, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of barangay Mapantig involving a total appropriation of 4,841,445 pesos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025. Number two, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of barangay Tayugo involving a total appropriation of 3,824,408 pesos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025. And lastly, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Sangguniyang Kabataan o barangay Dansuli. Involving a total appropriation of nine hundred Forty thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine pesos and thirty centavos. Operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty-twenty-five. We further recommend Mister Chair that this, uh, That these measures be deliberated on second reading into this, uh, into this session. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means, Chairperson yours truly, Committee Vice Chairperson Honorable Moises El Dular And Committee Secretary Honorable Engineer Marvin El Delanon. That would be all for the Committee Report number ten Of the Committee on Finance Mister Chair.
Okay, so any comment on the report, uh, there being none?
Mister Chair, I move for the adoption of the Committee Report number twenty-two, twenty-two-five dash ten Of the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means.
Second, okay, so the Committee Report, uh, Number ten dash twenty-two-five Of the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation is hereby adopted And the measures recommended be calendared for second reading this session. So next, Committee Report.
Next is the Joint Committee Report of the Committee on Social Services, God, Senior Citizens, Citizens, L G B Q, I A plus and Children's Welfare and Committee on Women and Family and Solo Parent.
So. Co- Chairman, Committee on, uh, Social Services. So this is a joint, uh, Committee Report. The other committee is Children. Uh, women. Committee on Women and the Committee on Social Services. So our Chairman Committee on Social Services is not around, so the Chairman on Committee on Women. You know, Honorable morning, Mihia. Okay, please proceed Honorable, uh, Generaline Mihia.
The Committee on Social Services, God, Senior Citizens, L G B T And Children's Welfare of the Committee on Women and Family. Joint Committee Report number two-zero-two-five dash one. First one to the referred matters to this committee, a public hearing was conducted on March twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five At two o'clock in the afternoon at the Sangunyang Bayan Session Hall, Isulan Sultan Kudarat. Invited during the same were the municipal social welfare and development officer as resource person, All heads of offices, all punong barangays of this municipality, The academics sector, the chief of Isulan Municipal Police Station and members comprising this committee. First item, the two thousand twenty-five revised children's welfare code of the Municipality of Isulan. Second, letter received from the Office of the Municipal Mayor dated February five Addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor for urgent passing of resolution adopting provincial ordinance number one-two-zero dash sixteen S P series of two thousand twenty-four. Item number one, the two thousand twenty-five revised children's welfare code of the Municipality of Isulan. During the public hearing, this committee presented the proposed draft ordinance stressing the need to have another revision of the existing Revised Children's Welfare Code of two thousand eighteen of the Municipality of Isulan Which was enacted on the eighteenth day of April two thousand eighteen by virtue of Municipal Ordinance number two-zero-one-eight dash two-two-seven I S D. For more than seven years, the code needs to be revised to afford full protection to the children's right and ensure the children's welfare In accord with the ever-changing society. The municipal social welfare and development officer requested to include Relevant and significant national and local laws to the code as the same were required by the Department of the Interior and Local Government or D I L G. The inclusion of those laws in the code was important because it is considered as one of the indicators in the S G L G evaluation. The draft code was verbally read by the Chairperson Committee on Social Services Stressing the national and local laws to be incorporated in the code as follows. Presidential Proclamation Number four-one-seven or Safer Internet Day for Children. A proclamation declaring every second Tuesday of February of every year as Safer Internet Day for Children in the Philippines. Republic Act Number one-one-nine-zero-eight An act mandating the establishment and implementation of the parent effectiveness service program To strengthen parental involvement in their children's development and learning and appropriating funds therefore. Republic Number eleven-eight-six-two or Expanded Anti-Trafficking in Person Act An act strengthening the policies on anti-trafficking in persons providing penalties for its violations and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose Republic Act Number nine-two-zero-two as amended, otherwise known as the Anti-Trafficking in Person Act of two thousand three And other special laws. Republic Act Number eleven-seven-six-seven or Foundling Recognition and Protection Act An act promoting the rights of and providing greater protection to deserted or abandoned children with unknown parents amending for their purpose Article two-seven-six and two-seven-seven of the revised penal code and special laws. Republic Act Number eleven-six-five-zero or instituting a pa- Policy of inclusion and services for learners Learners and disabilities in support of inclusive education act. An act instituting a policy of inclusion and services for learners with disabilities in support of inclusive education Establishing inclusive learning resource centers of learners with disabilities In all schools, municipalities, cities providing for standard appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Republic Act Number eleven-six-four-eight An act promoting for stronger protection against rape and sexual exploitation and abuse Increasing the age for determining the commission or statutory rape amending for the purpose act Number three-eight-one-five as amended, otherwise known as the revised penal code. Republic Act Number Eight-three-five-three Otherwise known as the anti-rape of nineteen-ninety-seven. Republic Act Number seven-six-ten Otherwise known as the Special Protection of Children Against Abuse, Exploitation and Discrimination Act. Republic Act Number eleven-six-four-two or Domestic Administrative Adoption and Alternative Child Care Act An act strengthening alternative childcare by providing for an administrative process of domestic adoption Reorganizing for the purpose of the Inter-Country Adoption Board Into the National Authority for Childcare amending for the purpose Republic Act Number eight-zero-four-three. Republic Act Number eleven-two-two-two and Republic Act one-zero-one-six-five repealing Republic Act Number eight-five-five-two and Republic Act Number nine-five Two-three and appropriating funds therefore. Republic Act Number eleven-five-nine-six or Anti-Child Marriage Law An act providing the practice of child marriage and imposing penalties for violations therefore thereof. Republic Act Number eleven-five-ten or Alternative Learning System Act An act institutionalizing the alternative learning system in basic education for out-of-school children in special cases and adult and appropriating funds therefore. Republic Act Number eleven-three-one-three or Safe Space Act An act defining gender-based sexual harassment in street, streets, Public spaces, online workplace, educational or training Institutions providing protective measure and prescribing penalties therefore for anti-bastos law. Republic Act Number eleven-two-two or Child Safety in Motor Vehicles Act An act providing for the special protection of child passengers in motor vehicles and for appropriating funds therefore. Municipal Ordinance Number two-zero-two-two dash two-six-five I S D An ordinance declaring every second Tuesday of February of every year as Safer Internet Day for Children in the Municipality of Isulan and for other purposes. Municipal Ordinance Number two-zero-two-one-two-sixty I S D An ordinance implementing the safer spaces in the Municipality of Isulan First one to refer to Republic Act Number eleven-three-one-three or the, an act defining gender-based sexual harassment in street, public spaces Online workplace, educational or training institutions providing protective measure and prescribing penalties therefore. Item number two, letter received from the Office of the Municipal Mayor dated February five, two thousand twenty-five Addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor for urgent passing of resolution adopting provincial ordinance number One-twenty dash sixteen S P series of two-zero-two-four. Provincial number, ordinance number one-two-zero Of two thousand twenty-four is entitled an ordinance prohibiting online sexual abuse and exploitation of children And child sexual abuse or exploitation materials In the province of Sultan Kudarat institutionalizing programs for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties thereof. Thereafter establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof. The internet has a positive catalyst for innovation, education and economic growth, however, It has also enabled those who would harm children by making it easier for them to produce, access and share sexual abuse materials To find like-minded offenders and reduce their risk or detection. The committees decided to localize the ordinance instead of adopting the provincial ordinance number one-twenty dash sixteen S P series of two thousand twenty-four. As provided for under the proposed ordinance, the prohibited acts are as follows. Online child sexual abuse material accessing, possessing, producing and/or distributing images and/or videos of child sexual abuse Grooming of children for sexual purposes, developing a relationship with a child to enable their sexual abuse and/or exploitation either online or offline. Live streaming sexual abuse of children using online video application to view and sometimes interact with sexual abuse of children live. Sex extortion, coercing and blackmailing Children for sexual purposes, producing and/or utilizing sexual images Or videos of child for the purposes of sexual or other personal gains. Other unlawful or prohibited acts provided in Republic Act Number nine-seven-seven-five or Anti-Child Pornography Act of two thousand nine Republic Act eleven-eight-six-two or Expanded Anti-Trafficking in Person Act of two thousand two And Republic Act eleven-nine-three or Anti-Online Abuse and Exploitation of Children Law. Legal basis. Republic Act eleven-nine-three or Anti-Online Sexual Abuse or Exploitation of Children and Anti-Sexual Abuse or Exploitation Materials Provides that the local government shall pass an ordinance to localize effort against O S A E C and C S A The account local culture and norms institutionalize community-based initiative that address at the barangay level For the prevention of program rehabilitation and reintegration under local social welfare and development office including support and protection for victims and survivors. Republic Act eleven-eight-six-two or the Expanded Anti-Trafficking Act of two thousand twenty-two was signed into the, by law Into law by President Rodrigo Duterte on June twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two Which provided for the definition of online sexual abuse of exploitation of children and child sexual abuse and exploitation material And child abuse material. The Municipality Welfare and Development Officer aided the committees in the explanation of the enumerated laws after which The committees asked comments and reaction from the body and hearing none, the public hearing was adjourned. Recommendation, wherefore premises considered, the committee hereby recommends passing or enacting The two thousand twenty-five revised children's welfare code of the Municipality of Isulan. Second, an ordinance prohibiting online sexual abuse and exploitation of children And child sexual abuse or exploitation material in the Municipality of Isulan Institutionalizing programs for its prevention and eradication and providing penalties there Of thereafter establishing a supportive environment for child victims and providing funds thereof. Order that these measures be deliberated on second reading this session Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Social Services and Children's Welfare Committee Chairperson Honorable Darlene Lama, Committee Vice Chairperson, yours truly and secretary. Sinong ba secretary? That's all my. Sinong ba secretary? Secretary, Honorable Sergeant K Palasigi. That's all my committee report Mister Chairman.
Okay, so if There are no question? Honorable, uh, morning. So please proceed.
I move for the commi- I move for the committee report Mister Chairman of the Committee on Social Services, God And Children's Welfare and the Committee on Women and Family.
Okay, so the committee report, uh, the joint committee report number Uh, twenty-two-five dash zero-one of the Committee on Social Services and the Committee on Women Is hereby adapted and the measures be calendared for second reading this session. So next item on committee report.
Next is the Committee on Games and Amusement.
Okay, so the Chairman, again, uh, Honorable, uh, Generaline Mihia is recognized.
Number Dash two-oh-four. First one to the referred matter to this committee, the committee moto propio perus the request from Barangay Kalawag III as the same no longer requires the conduct of a committee hearing. Resolution number two-zero-two-five dash zero-one-one of Barangay Kalawag III entitled A resolution requesting a permit from the Municipal Government of Isulan and other relevant authorities To conduct cockfighting as part of the fiftieth Uh, Foundation Anniversary and Eighteenth Warras Warras Festival of Barangay Kalawag III on April Ten-seventeen and twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Findings, the fore-said resolution was received by this office and stamped by the S B Secretariat on March ten at ten forty-three A M. The schedule of cockfighting activities is on April ten-seventeen-twenty-four. The holding of cockfighting activities is in line with the forthcoming Fifty-eighth Foundation Anniversary and Eighteenth Warras Warras Festival of the barangay. The purpose of the Cockfighting activities is to add color to the festivity while providing economic benefits to local stakeholders. For barangay cockfighting, the committee gave emphasis to the, on adherence of municipal ordinance Otherwise known as the Cockfighting Code of the Municipality of Isulan which provides There shall be no cockfighting activities in all barangay of this municipality except during the occasion of the celebration of barangay fiestas. The barangay concerned shall be allowed only to hold cockfighting activities for three sessions And that is during the two days before Vesper's The Vesper's Day itself, subject to the authority of the Sangunyang Bayan. Only the barangay government shall be allowed to promote cockfighting activities in their respective barangays On the occasion of local fiestas. The concerned barangay government shall be responsible for the maintenance of peace and order And the safety of the public during the holding of the above-mentioned activities in their locality. Filing of requests, the request to the Sangunyang Bayan for authority to hold cockfighting activities Shall be filed at least fifteen days before the scheduled dates of the cockfighting activities. The number of days shall be reconed from the time such request is received and stopped by the Office of the Secretary to the Sangunyang Bayan. Failure to comply with this provision shall resolve, result in the disapproval of such request. The Committee on Games and Amusement finds that the filing of requests has Substantially complied with the provision of the Cockfighting Code of the Municipality. However, the scheduled of cockfighting on April seventeen could not be had Considering that it falls on the Holy Thursday and considered violative of the provision of the Cockfighting Law of nineteen-seventy-four Which provides, holding of cockfights, provided that no cockfighting shall be held on December thirty, June twelve, November thirty, Holy Thursday, Good Friday, Election or Referendum Day and during Registration days of such election or referendum. Finally, the concerned barangay shall secure permit from the office To officially conduct the cockfighting activities. Based on the foregoing, the committee hereby recommends passing a resolution Authorizing the Municipal Mayor to grant permit to Barangay Kalawag III To hold cockfighting activities on April ten and twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five only In connection with the fifty-eighth eighth Foundation Anniversary and Eighteenth Warras Warras Festival of the barangay Kalawag III. Order that this measure be deliberated on second reading this session Respectfully submitted by Chairperson yours truly, Vice Chairperson Darlene Lama and Secretary Marvin El Delanon. That's all my report Mister Chair. Darlene Lama and Secretary Marvin Eldalanon. That's all my report, Mr. Chair.
So. Uh, honorable morning, there's no question?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of my committee report number two zero two five dash zero four.
Okay, so the committee report of the Committee on Games, uh, committee report number twenty twenty-five dash zero four is hereby adapted. And uh, there's a recommendation, Honorable Mihia, for second reading. Okay, so the measure be calendered for second reading this session. So next item.
There are no more committee reports, Mr. Chair. We are now on the second read- reading.
Okay, uh, as part of the item on first reading, the presence of uh, Mr. Andrewell. Uh, did we send a communication?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
To appear, okay. So, uh, as agreed uh, earlier or last session that we are going to decide on the concurrence of uh, Mr. Andrewell Paliasige as uh, our municipal administrator, okay? So we had a previous uh, discussion or deliberation at the time. Uh, the chair will uh, have a nominal uh, voting or calling of uh, the members uh, for them to uh, whether they are going to uh, conquer or not. So we will be deciding whether to conquer or not. If you have further uh, uh, explanation or uh, reasoning that you wish to state uh, before or after you state your vote, then you may do so, okay? So any comment so far, Honorable Apiado?
Uh, Mr. Chair, since uh, the concurrence was referred for second reading, for us to dispose this said request, I suppose that you should have a motion first, then we will be dividing the house if those who who will be in favor or not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Apiado. We will be uh, doing that. Honorable Ryan Dumaran.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good morning to you, Geneva. Miss, Mr. Chair, would like to ask if may arap ba kita sang ano, uh, ruling on how the Sanggunian uh, define the the applications of the applicant procedure?
On how?
May ruling ba kita, uh, what kung ano ang function sang Sanggunian on determining the qualifications of the uh, applicant procedure?
Uh, ang term is concordance, whether we conquer or not. So in our, sa pag-exercise ta, kung ma-conquer kita or not, uh, daw wala sing uh, daw definite give uh, uh, directive, uh, kung ano ang regulation ang uh, ginahsunod na ton, daw basic siya sa aton nga discussion.
But at as to the basic function of the Sanggunian, Mr. Chair, may we know kung ano basic function sang Sanggunian?
Uh, it's stated, oh yes, it's stated in the local code. So can we flash on screen?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Function of the local, uh, the provision of the local code on uh, concordance. Ano siya? So, letter D, section four four three of the local government code. Uh, Honorable Dumaran, any further comment? So it states there that appointment by the municipal mayor. Heads of departments and offices shall be appointed by the municipal mayor with the concordance of the majority of all the Sangguniang Bay members subject to civil service law, rules and regulations. Okay, so uh, we need a mo- movement to for the concordance of our, of the appointed uh, municipal administrator.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Ryan Dumaran.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to pass a resolution conquering the appointment of Mr. Uh, Andrewell Paliasige uh, as a municipal administrator of the municipality of Isulan.
Any secondar? No, there's no secondar on the motion?
So, Mr. Chair, objection.
Yes, Honorable Dalanon.
Objection, Mr. Chair.
Uh, there's no second yet on the motion. So there was a second and there is an objection, okay? So, the movement, Honorable Ryan Dumaran, uh, do you want to explain or speak further on your motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the only basic function, one of the function of the Sanggunian is to identify the qualific- uh, determining the qualifications only of the uh, uh, of the applicant, no? It is the local chief executive discretion in appointing the appointing of the position of uh, as a municipal administrator, Mr. Chair. Uh, siguro ang aton malandra is ang basis na ton. Uh, ang qualification niya is he or she qualified as a municipal administrator. Uh, siguro wala namang gitsang ibang gini ano. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's an objection coming from Honorable Marvin Dalanon. Do you wish to say something further also, Honorable Dalanon?
No need, Mr. Chair. The same as uh, last time we object.
Okay. So, any other comment from the other members, Honorable Dular?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, according to our Republic Act seven one sixty that uh, in cities or uh, city administrator, uh, it must be mandatory for a city administrator, but uh, in our case, in the municipality, uh, uh, it is not mandatory or uh, we can have or we cannot have the city administrator, so. Arap na sa aton kung na-butakan ta, but I observed, Mr. Chair, for how many months since nga nagpungka nga acting uh, vice mayor until now. So wala man kita sag administrator, so do okay man ang uh, padalagan sa aton municipality, wala sing municipal administrator. So, uh, and uh, besides, Mr. Chair, so uh, gin tagaan tamansang tsan sa aton nga applicant uh, nga mag-attend sa aton season, sa subong, padalaman taliter, sa aton nga local chief executive nga mag-attend siya since nga wala man siya nag-attend, uh, his presence shows that uh, he is not interested of this city possession. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, uh, yes, Honorable Argent Paliasige.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before speaking about the intention or uh, intention, no? Uh, the staff should have asked first if the, if Mr. Andrewell Paliasige is available because as I know, he is on official travel, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so. Any other comment? If there's none, then let's proceed to the voting. Okay, so oh, do we wish to express our vote? Uh, we had a nominal voting before, ano, subong? Shall we just raise our hands or uh, raising of hands, okay? So, let's uh, proceed the first with the uh, with the uh, positive proposition. Uh, so, those who are in favor of the motion for the concordance of uh, or the resolution, for the concordance of Mr. Andrewell Paliasige as our municipal administrator, please raise your he- uh, your hand. So, Honorable Ryan Dumaran, Honorable William Foscablo, so there are two votes, okay? So those who are not in favor of uh, the appointment or the concordance, I mean, of uh, or those who are not in favor of the resolution for the concordance of the appointment of Mr. Andrewell Paliasige, please raise your hand. Okay, Honorable Apiado, Honorable Dular, Honorable Mihia, Honorable Dalanon and Honorable Dura, two, four, five votes. Uh, Honorable Argent, so abstain. So the appointment or the resolution uh, for the concordance of Honorable, of Mr. Andrewell Paliasige is uh, disapproved or denied. Okay, so, next item.
So next is the, and our second reading is the based on the committee report of the Committee on Finance.
Uh, yes, uh, Honorable Apiado, please proceed.
Mr. Chair, this is uh, the subject of uh, the product of the committee report of the Committee on Finance. Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of barangay Mapantig involving a total appropriation of four million, four hundred eight hundred forty-one thousand, four hundred forty-five pesos operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so the resolution declaring the annual budget of uh, barangay Mapantig for fiscal year twenty twenty-five in the amount of four million, eight hundred forty-one pesos, four hundred forty-five operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution, passing of resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of barangay Tayugo involving a total appropriation of three million, eight hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred eight pesos operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five.
Paliasiman.
No, Mr. Chair, this, um, nakaano lang pag-print sang committee report, but as reflected in the ordinance
Four million?
Appropriation ordinance of barangay Tayugo, the total amount of their budget for twenty twenty-five is three million
Ah, three million.
Eight hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred eight pesos.
Four hundred eight, okay. So there being objection, the resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of barangay Tayugo involving the total appropriation of four mi- ah, three million uh, eight hundred twenty-four thousand, uh, four hundred eight operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five is approved.
And lastly, Mr. Mr. Chair, I move for passing of resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of Sangguniang Kabataan o barangay Dansuli involving a total appropriation of nine hundred forty thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine pesos and thirty centavos operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so there being objection, the resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of Sangguniang Kabataan o barangay Dansuli involving the total appropriation of nine hundred forty thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five is hereby approved.
So next is based on the joint committee report of the Committee on Social Services and Women and Family.
Okay, so before that, I relinquish the chair to Honorable Carlo Apiad.
We are now on second reading. Is the committee ready to present before the body the draft ordinance? Or uh?
Mr. Chair, actually, I was not around during the public hearing and the chairman on this committee is not around.
Okay.
Because she is on official travel, Honorable Darlene Lama.
Would would it be okay for us, for us to uh, table the discussion for second reading next session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
The discussion on second reading as regard the twenty twenty-five revised children's welfare code of the municipality of Isulan is hereby, is hereby uh, tabled.
So next is based on the committee report of the Committee on Games and Amusement.
The chairperson of the committee is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I move for a passing of a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay Kalawag three Mr. Chairman, I move for a passing of a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay Kalawag III to hold cockfighting activities on April ten and twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five only in connection with the fifty-eight uh, fifty-eight foundation anniversary and eighteenth Juarez Juarez Festival of the barangay Kalawag III.
There's a motion, any secondar, duly seconded, any objection? So hearing none, a resolution is hereby passed authorizing the uh, municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay Kalawag III to hold cockfighting activities on April ten and twenty-four, twenty twenty-five only in connection with the fifty-founding anniversary and eighteenth Juarez Juarez Festival of barangay Kalawag III. Any more matter under uh, second reading?
There are no more matters on second reading, Mr. Chair. We are now on the unassigned business.
On unassigned business, we just received, just this moment a um, letter from the local chief executive, Honorable Maritis K. Paliasige. May I request our secretary to please read the letter?
Letter received from the Office of the Municipal Mayor addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor requesting for the urgent passing of resolution for the adoption and approval of the Local Health Board Resolution Number zero zero one series of twenty twenty-five. So resolution endorsing to the Sangunian Bayan for a resolution in the disposition and allocation of Phil Health Consulta Package Capitation Sharing. Attached is the copy of the LHB Resolution Number zero zero one, series of twenty twenty-five.
If there's no objection from the floor, um let that uh, item be read on first reading and refer that matter to the Committee on Health. Are there any other matters you wanted to discuss on, on unassigned business? Any announcement? Since we don't have any matters on as- unassigned business at uh, eleven thirty-six March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, the session is now adjourned.